I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with public input. So you think anybody would care to say this? This is a big crowd this morning, probably the biggest crowd I can remember for these meetings. I do thank you all for the dawn patrol here. Don't think anybody cares to say? Okay, thank you. We'll move on then for the approval of the acro minutes.
Just under one public comment besides getting the paragraph over to the left like it should be. Other than that, he explained it would be less costly. I think he needed karma, could possibly be built in stages, karma. He needed two karmas.
All right.
Ramana.
Ramana.
Yeah, well, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get that public comment over there because I tried about eight times. And this is why I don't want to have to do this anymore because...
If you care to, don't worry about it.
It's, yeah. Which one, the karma after where?
Oh, they're in red, under the first section.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll just, I'll see what I can do about that and I'll then email them to you.
Oh, you then have me to try to move the paragraph over?
No, no, I'll, I'll try to do it and then I'll try to email it out so that everyone can, can get it. I'll do the best I can with that. But I can't guarantee that I'm gonna do it because I may be throwing my computer in the middle of the lake now that the ice is off.
Okay, then a motion to approve the minutes with the radical changes?
The vote.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to treasures report.
Um, nothing special, things that have been received.
Yeah.
And some nice donations.
Salvation.
I took a reading. Five hundred, yes. I wanted to make sure there wasn't dreaming that.
Oh, you weren't. It was really nice.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion to approve the report?
Hmm.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to libraries report.
I don't have a lot to smoke either. Um, April was a short month made even shorter by the fact that we had lost a day to snow. I did not count the snowshoes out in April, but nobody took them out, so they're finally, they're gone. Back in the basement of the town office, hopefully for most of the rest of the year. If not, a little bit.
To let people know that we're not yet today.
Oh, I know, I know, I know. Well, I did dare to put N.A. on the rest of, you know, through September anyway for the snowshoes. Hopefully, we won't need them until then. I don't think there's much else of note to report in terms of statistics. Let's see. Bill Marcuson stopped by. He's working on a town, on a project for possible town purchase agreement for electricity. And if they wanna, they would like to know if we want to participate. And if so, they need some electric bill information from us, which Marsha brought over this morning.
Are they gonna be doing the bulk buying program?
I think he's looking, that's what he's looking into, yes. Is that right?
Well, certainly, they could save us, save our budget money and save the town budget money on what's going on.
I'll get on the information that he's looking for. Thanks for bringing this, Marsha. We have been working on a project to digitize some of our collection, our New Hampshire collection. Specifically, the videos that were done, the video interviews that were done as part of the bicentennial in 1995. And so far, we've got a lot of them done, from video to DVD. We've got Jackie Rollins and Jeff Hunter on one, Eric Kennevery Craig, Bob Straw, and his wife is on there too. Charlie Witten, Eleanor Davis, Will Stockman, and Bill Williams. If you haven't ever seen these or listened to them, either when they were done or any time since, they are really amazing. And there are still a few more to come if you care to check them out. They're almost ready to go. They're not quite processed yet, but they're all, they're all digital. And I think...
So these were just interviews about...
Yes.
What, were they on tape before?
They were on videotape, yes.
Ah.
Yeah, they were done as part of the bicentennial project.
So they, well, what's the topic? Just history of the town?
Yeah, history of the town and their own personal history. And they're really fascinating to listen to and watch. So those will be available to circulate very soon. And I'm sorry to say that they're also doing, we're also gonna digitize the Tufton Row Town Follies, which was from 1989. A fundraiser that we did for this edition in which Lucy Bell Rosiger played the front half of a horse and I played the back half. For posterity, that's it. So that will be part of the collection too, for whoever wants to catch up with that happy vacation. Actually, that was a lot of fun, too. Coming up, we have the Tufton Row Central School exhibit opening on Friday tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:30. I hope many of you can come. It's really always a charming exhibit. And this is only the second time that the art teacher has arranged an opening. And I think that's kind of exciting, too. A lot of the kids will be here to talk about what they created. And it's, it's just, there's a lot of energy going on. It's fun. Summer programs for kids are all set. They will begin on Friday, June 30th, and run through Friday, August 4th. Six different programs, all at 10:00 a.m. Friday is the only morning in July when there's no swimming lessons, so we take advantage of that. New fiction book group is beginning on June 21st. That's Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. The first book is The Paris Wife by Paul McLean. And there will be books available to borrow after May 25th. We have been borrowing Makerspace toys, STEM toys, from the state library, which purchases and then lets libraries borrow for a month at a time. We had Gears, Gears, Gears for a month, and that was so popular that we decided we better buy our own set when we passed it along, so that will be coming. This month, we have Mag Formers, which are really fun to play with. And it has been very interesting to watch as we set up this sort of passive programming, how many adults are over there playing with the magnets, that's one of the kids, and also with, with the gears. So clearly, the building thing is, the gene is in there, no matter how old you get. It's fun to watch. New museum passes are coming in now as the season begins, slowly trickling in, so those are all opening up again. We'll put a notice up when we have them all. Brand new this year is a day pass for the New Hampshire State Parks, which is good for all-day use parks for two adults and four kids. You can't use it at Hampton Beach or Wall of Sands, or the Flume, or Cannon Tramway, or for parking in the Seacoast, or for camping, but for everything else. For all the day, day-use camps. So hopefully, those will be coming soon, too. That's new for us this year. Should be good. Plant sale and book sale coming up on June 3rd. This is a Friends of the Library fundraiser. Will be $5 a plant, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's good, yeah, some may be cheaper to do these things.
Okay, all right. There may be some bargains.
They're all bargains.
They're all, all bargains, and they're all Tufton Row grown, so you know they will grow in your garden, too. We will have a book sale at the same time, and it will be a $10 a bag book sale. You can fill your, your bag up with whatever books you want, kids, adults, movies, music, whatever, $10 a bag. And this will be in conjunction with the townwide yard sale. So I think that's my roundup.
Christie, can you just say again, what's the name of the, the program that gives us these STEM?
Oh, it's the state, it's the state library.
What's the name of the?
Makers, Makerspace Toys.
M-A-K-E-R?
Maker Play. They call it Maker Play, yeah.
Maker Play?
Maker Play.
Oh, okay. Make or play?
Maker, no maker.
Maker, like that, like a...
Yeah, yep.
Maker or play?
No, no, Maker Play. Maker Play, M-A-K-E-R Play.
Two words?
Yes. And all of those Maker Play toys are, are designed to...
Teach science, technology, and mathematics.
Yep, yep. So we're doing our best.
I love it.
Yeah, they're, they're cool.
Aye?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, new business. Review of the selectmen's meeting pertaining to the building addition plan that was presented to us last month by Skip Hurt. What do you think? Am I a better place to start?
Well, I think one thing that I would like is a better understanding of how close that building was going to be to the road. And I didn't get an answer to that question yet.
Well, I don't think we would until we possibly took the next step.
Well...
Well, we could get a measuring tape and go out there and figure it out.
Right, well, that's, that's just it. I mean, he, he's got a design that brings us a certain number of feet forward. Well, from the end of that, I'd like to know how far we are from that road. And that's what I asked him, and he, he didn't seem to have an answer for us. And I don't see Skip here this morning, so I think we need, before I would even consider this, I'd like to know how close we're gonna be to that road.
In partial answer, I consider Skip felt there would be room for a roadway out front.
Right, Skip felt there'd be room for the roadway, but how close can we come to that road is what I'd like to know.
As I recall from the last time we designed an addition, the rule, the zoning rule is that the building has to have a 50-foot setback, but municipal buildings have some leeway. I don't know how much.
Paul?
I think we should pursue this. If there's a chance for considerable savings, I believe we need to go forward and find out what the true story is.
Well, Christie, I actually had to talk, and Christie made up a list of concerns, and I, I had a list of concerns. And I don't want to speak for Christie, but I can go over a few of them. The interior layout is, is a big concern, as far as I'm concerned. It's one thing to say we're going to make an envelope around the building and make the building bigger, but how is it going to work internally as far as taking out, with the potential of having to take out interior walls and that sort of thing? Are we gonna be obstructing sightlines as far as that is concerned, and security, that sort of thing? Once again, now we're gonna have multiple open entrances, okay? And once again, the security issue as far as being able to, you know, staff keep an eye on the overall library. Skip said that our existing bathrooms are up to code. I don't believe that they are up to code, so that's gonna have, something that's gonna have to be addressed. Our existing septic system is 47 years old. Now, we start adding another set of bathrooms to that, is that septic system going to be able to, to control that? And so that's a big expense, and where are we going to put it? Now, we, you know, there's a potential, of course, that you could put it underneath the, the parking area that he was proposing, because it will, well, no, don't, don't correlate this, Marion, because that's what we're gonna, that was the plan for across the street.
That was, see, past, that was the plan. That's not the plan, right? They moved it out across the street.
No, no, it's under the, it's under the driveway.
I thought they moved that out.
No.
No?
And that's, and that's perfectly all right. That's, that's, you know, that is not an uncommon thing in construction, and that's what you need to do.
It's, it's not, it's not like it's gonna, you know, heavy use. It's not like an apartment.
I am under the impression that that was moved and...
No.
No.
No?
No, because that's, and it, it happens all the time. It happens in big shopping centers, that sort of thing.
I understand.
Okay, moving on, we have, we have HVAC issues because if we're going to, if we're going to do this, right now, we're running, of course, we're running the two, the two heating systems, radiant building, radiant in the new part of the building, and the forced-out water in the other building. But addition to that, I think we're also gonna have to look at central air conditioning. It doesn't make any sense to, to do this project if we're not gonna be doing it and bringing it up to what we were hoping to have on the other side of the road. And the air quality, as far as what's gonna be available in the new building. I don't know if we've ever tested air quality in this building to see how it is. The closings, I know that he said that we'd only have to close for one or two days potentially. I don't personally think that's gonna be the situation. I don't see how you can knock out exterior walls of a building and then hope to do it. And then how, if we do have to close, what do we do as far as trying to, you know, as trying to maintain, maintain some kind of order as we go forward in the daily operation of the building? The parking is still gonna be an issue because I know that it's gonna have to do some sort of wetlands mitigation in order for us to do parking out in that area. And then that's, in addition to that, okay, as I said, making the building work with the old part and the new part, I think is gonna be a real challenge on the part of any architect. And in my heart of hearts, I don't want to go, I don't want to do something to do something rather than doing the right thing, okay? And I think that's, and then, you know, Dave Ford touched on that at the meeting last week, that we had a plan across the street for a building that would take us to 50, 60 years out. If we do anything on this building, we know that this is gonna be the last time we're gonna be able to touch this building just because of space constraints, that sort of thing. And the other thing that I think is absolutely critical, and I will stand on this until the very end, is that in no circumstances would I ever advocate going ahead with this plan without voter approval. Now, Skip was alluding to the fact that we can log out here and put in the gravel parking lot and start in September. His point was that it was gonna show, like, oh, yeah, we're gonna, we're moving ahead with this thing full steam, but I'm gonna say, talking, I, I have been, I have been severely shushed eyes of social media because I had the audacity to stand up at the town meeting and say, yes, this library will be built. I necessarily said it would be built tomorrow, but I said, down the road, it will be built. All right, and that was considered to be very presumptive on my part, and I didn't mean to be presumptive. I was just making a statement of the fact that down the road, something's gonna happen. So I, I think it would be a real, real mistake to try and go forward without town approval and firm town funding. Because the last thing, I mean, the worst possible scenario I could imagine, as we start a project, and we have walls up and so on and so forth, and roof trusses in place, and the town meeting, and all of a sudden, said, nope, stop. Then what do we do? And I, I could, that's totally untenable as far as I'm concerned. Those are my thoughts on the, at least initially on the subject.
I have to agree with that, and I have to agree with the fact that I don't, I don't think that we can move forward without town approval. And I think that then we're into another year of putting everything off for a whole year. Because it just, it makes no sense to me that we're gonna stifle ourselves here. I agree with that. We're not gonna have a building that's reasonable for 50 years down the road. I mean, it might, we might get it through 50 years, 40 years. We don't know for sure, absolutely, but it's not...
Well, none of us have, you know, none of us have a crystal ball.
We don't, but, you know, we have a plan. We have another plan for back here, and now we're gonna be into a third plan. And what is to say that we move forward, spend $18,000, that's the bare minimum, bones, that we would be asked to spend for a, for a plan, for that, to look at roof lines and interior designs? So now we're looking at $18,000 going out of some fund somewhere, all right? And then we have no plans, then we have to go forward with more plans, and that's, again, we're coming, we're coming back with more, asking for more money to see if it's a reasonable plan for us.
Well...
I don't, I really applaud Skip for what he did. And when he first came in, you know, it was very exciting to me. But I think we're really restricting ourselves if we do, if we move forward and start doing $18,000 here, and then another $25,000 or $30,000 to get the, the plans and get the engineers in here. Because you heard Anthony say, we have to have engineers to see if the load will be held by the existing foundation.
Well, there, we, we, I think we all acknowledge that there are gonna be certain costs involved.
Right, the costs, uh, to me, they already have started to mount up. And we've already spent that money over there. We've got engineering studies. We've, we've got all of that done over there. I wasn't happy about moving the library across the street, but, you know, I'm not happy about staying here and having a mess, you know? And I've been in buildings when they took walls down. I have, I have a severe case of asthma that Christie will attest to, that has been caused by buildings coming down. I'm in the building as a teacher, and I'm getting asthma attacks from it. You know, it's just not a safe thing to try to renovate a building while the building is open. I mean, it becomes a real health issue. Pardon?
Wolfboro's doing it.
Well, good luck to Wolfboro, is what I can say.
I don't think they're looking forward to it.
No.
But that's what they're gonna do.
Well, you know, let's not make the same mistakes.
They're doing it for political reasons, because they felt that they could not, you know, same cost for them, renovate or build new, completely the same cost. But people felt that they, they liked the building and wanted to say, well, you know, that people like this building.
I think...
Well, and that's, and that's the hard fact. I mean, there, there, there are economics involved, and there are politics involved. You know, there, there is a, there's a certain group of people who dug their feet in and said, we do not want to build a new library. So if this plan were to come to fruition, and we, and we could show that there would be significant savings, and a significant savings is not just for the library, a significant saving is for what's gonna happen down the road. As, as Bob pointed out last week, I said that, you know, there is an inherent value to this building, to the town, for its next use. And now, the next use was to be the police station, and the next use was to have this building to be revamped for town hall. And you can do something with the, and take the existing town hall, townhouse building and say, okay, that's gonna become the police station. I don't know. Once again, I don't have a crystal ball. But that means that the savings on this construction has to factor in those dollar costs. And the only, I'm sorry.
But I, I have to say that one thing I like about Skip's plan is it finally breaks the linkage between us and the police.
Point well taken.
You know, go across the, yeah, and I think that's in our favor.
Well, those are just my, you know, certainly review. The next part is that after the meeting, I was in contact with, with SMP. And I spoke at length with, with Anthony and another member of the firm, and I said, okay, Anthony was at the meeting, you heard what was spoken, you saw at least Skip's initial presentation. You know, what's it gonna, what's it gonna cost us, and what's gonna be included in those costs, that we would go off the ground? And he forwarded to me, you have, you have a copy? We all have copies here. I did not print up copies for everybody, I'm sorry, but I can give you the highlights of it. I can give you the highlights of it, certainly. The scope of services that would be included in the presentation are to tour, measure, and generate base drawings of the current library, meeting with the staff and the trustees. Review and confirm your program of space based on your functional and community-wide requirements. Let me preface this by the same, that they already have a lot of information from the building across the street, which is not gonna take further research and not gonna have to be factored into their costs. They want to develop conceptual plans, two or three for initial review, considering the space needs, book stack collection, visual control, so on and so forth. Revise sketches two times to achieve a agreed-upon conceptual design. Produce a 3D computer model, select a design concept. Draw an outline specification for the construction manager to use to develop conceptual construction budget. Coordinate with owners, construction manager, to review design options and develop construction budget. Assemble a total project budget, including the construction, equipment, furniture associated, and all other construction. Be with us four times, and for that, the figure is $16,450. Okay? If we, if they were to come and make multiple public presentations, which they had done in the last time, that would have a $1,900 cost. And if there was to be building energy modeling, which is to assess building empty open mechanical system options, develop building operational budget, that would have a $5,200, $5,200 cost. Now, as what Marion was, was saying earlier, there are things that are said and not said. This does not include engineering fees, which would have to be done, as, because as, as Anthony pointed out last week, we know what the footings are to support this roof, but we don't know what the footings are gonna be to, you know, support multiple roofs, whether we'd have to add footings and that sort of thing. And the only way to do that is to have the engineers come in, do some boring, and look at what we have. No landscape architecture, obviously, no septic design included, no surveying. There's some, you're looking at the high points, some of the stuff is, is too, too... Well, those are the high points of what would not be included. So...
Would, would the scope of this work get us close enough to an estimated cost? So that we could say, yes, it makes sense, one of these three plans makes sense to try?
Yes, because that's, that's the point.
Or it doesn't, because I just am remembering what Andre said to you after the meeting on Friday, which was that he thought it looked a lot like, more like 1.8 or 9 than 1.3 for construction.
Well, as you'll see, line eight is assemble a total project budget, including the construction budget, equipment, furniture, associated soft costs. After the engineering, everything done. That's my name on the first page.
Okay, so we'd be able to tell them, once we had, once, if we spent this money and chose a plan, and they took it to schematic design phase, we'd be able to say, yeah, for sure, this plan will work, and it's a lot less expensive than a new building. Or no, this plan won't work, and it's almost as much as a new building.
Yes.
We should be able to say that, okay?
Well, this is what, this is what they did the last time. Then, you know, they went ahead and did a lot further work in advance of the town meeting because
Right.
of what we thought, and we thought we were gonna be successful. We wanted to get going as fast as possible.
I just want it to be clear...
Oh, it's very clear.
That what the choices are.
It's very clear.
I guess my other question is, this is the cheapest we can get a good cost estimate. And doing three designs, do we want three options, or is that not where the money is? I mean, if it's not where the money is, it doesn't make any sense.
I don't think that's where the money is. But he's got F there as public design option investigated, so one of them will be Skip's design, and the other two will be designs that they come up with for a possible addition that might give us the space that we need over here.
I mean, could we, could we, could we squeeze this budget? I'm sure we could probably squeeze this budget just by saying, all right, we want only one plan. I think that's a mistake. I think that's a mistake, because that's, you know, that's, that's why they have architects. If they, you look at the overall, the overall project and say, well, you know, it made sense to, it made sense to push this wall out to make room for a bigger meeting room, but maybe you could do something else in the front that, you know, Skip had not, had not thought about. but maybe you could do something else in the front that, you know, Skip had not, had not thought about.
Well, one of the things that I don't like about Skip's plan is on the front. And he, and I was satisfied with the fact that Anthony said that they could change the roof lines. That flat roof that you, and it's not flat, but it's an angled roof. You're looking at the roof on the front of the building. And with, it's just plain. And now you're, what, I think he said twenty feet closer to the roof? Well, he was not clear. At one point, I thought he said he was moving it out fourteen feet in the front.
Essentially, if you look at the width of the building now and you double it, you pretty much got what he was proposing.
Wow.
You know, if you look at that, the end out there and just projecting your mind out to the roof, that was his idea.
Well, it's good, but once again, you're not, you're not going to know until you commit to spending money to find out. And that's the bottom line. And I agree with Paul. I think, you know, once again, it's, if we say no, we're not going to do it, we don't think we should do it, then I think we're gonna have problems down the road for us. Certainly when it comes time to present, you know, as, at next March, when we want to come forward with the.
Right, and if we say yes, we're committing to spending sixteen thousand dollars immediately.
Well, somebody's committed to it, yeah.
Right, well, that's, we, the town.
We're the taxpayers.
We, the taxpayers, are spending sixteen thousand dollars. And we have to do the engineering studies. And how much of those?
We might not have to.
We might not, no.
This is going to get us to a point where we should be able to say, where we would really have some real numbers to compare.
It could come out that it was, it could come out of one point three million dollars without the engineering, which gets you to say, yeah, let's go ahead. Or it could come out, it's going to be two point six million dollars without the engineering, which gets you to say, let's go across the street. It could go either way. I think, I think Andre's probably got it pretty close to right.
But I don't think we're going to be able to get away with this without having, you know, some kind of, some kind of structural engineer beyond the architect come in and look at what we already have.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, these are buildings on slab.
Yes.
Okay, buildings on slab.
In a wetland.
Yes.
In a wetland, yeah. So, moving forward, I would advocate that we would, at the very least, he asked to be put on for an agenda with the selectmen's meeting so that they can have a copy of this in advance so we can discuss it. And if it's not, if they don't feel it's time for us to be on an agenda, I would ask for a work session for the three selectmen and us to sit down and go over this thing. Primarily to see if they maintain, if they feel that it's worth moving forward with and to wrangle dollars. Where are the money going to come from? Is it going to come out of our private donations? Or is it going to come out of the capital reserve funds?
Did you talk to these guys about, does this come out of their total percentage fee? That was very important to.
No.
Chip, no, you didn't talk to them about that? Okay, well.
No, I did not, I did not ask them.
Okay.
I did not ask them.
I don't, I don't think it would come out of the total percentage fee of the, of building across the street.
No.
No.
No, out of this, if we renovate here, yeah, the sixteen thousand comes out of the seven percent or whatever the heck it is.
Well, I tell you, one of the other things that bothers me is that we are in the midst of a major capital fundraising campaign. And we've collected pledges from people. And I heard during that meeting with the selectmen that we'd have to stop that pledge campaign.
We don't have to.
Well, we almost have to because how?
And.
We have, we have everything virtually ready to go.
Oh, I see, because you've got your.
Ready to go as far as our material, what we were asking for, how we were asked for it.
Yeah.
And I, it's very difficult to go out and ask for pledges for something that's not going to be built, potentially.
And, you know, further, we have also had a couple of people indicate that they are, would not be as willing to contribute either anything or as much to another renovation of this building instead of a new building. So that's just another, another piece of it. But I don't think we can keep on.
Any chance, any chance you can come up with a million dollar donor? Because really, the other big advantage.
We take, we take checks.
Why not? Do you have, do you think you can?
Oh, hands up in the back. You win.
Yeah.
If we.
No, we were, we were looking for, quite honestly, we were looking for our biggest donor. It'd be about a fifty thousand dollar. That's how we'd build our pyramid. Going all the way down to collecting coke bottles and going over to Maine and getting them redeemed and bringing that back for the pot. We will take any, we will take anything and everything, but that's what we were targeting.
I'll tell you, I have to say, I'm really discouraged by, I loved Skip's plan, but I'm very discouraged by this because this is going to put us out at least another year, I think.
Oh, so it's going to put us out to March. The scope of work, this scope of work can be accomplished in eight weeks, once the documents are signed. Which would get us to, if we were to, you know, we were to meet with the selectmen in, you know, the next couple of weeks, that would get us to about May 30th, where they would have this, this scope of work completed.
I just, I don't know, I just don't see that it can be done in that length of time. And maybe I'm.
Well, that's.
That's what they say, the committee's.
Right there, it's right there.
Yeah, it's, it's right there. But then, then we have to get the support. And I, I don't know, I just, I'm very reticent to do this. We have invested money in a plan up there, we've invested money in a plan over there, we've invested money upon money upon money. And I think that needs to get factored into this particular building. And, and the town needs to see, before town meeting, you know, why we're making, why we're coming forward with a decision that we're coming forward with.
I think we have ample ti, I think we have ample time before town meeting. My greatest fear is that if we say no, we don't think we want to spend the money to do this, we want to continue along the cross the street, what do we do when we get to town meeting and there are two warrant articles for the library? Because it only takes twenty-five people to get a, to get a warrant article by petition.
And how can you say, when somebody stands up and says, they wouldn't even spend a nominal amount of money to save us a million?
Well.
You know, I mean, we're both, everybody, everybody here is right.
Right.
You're right.
Yeah, we're all right.
We're all right. The question is that, how are we all going to be right and be successful at the same time?
I think you're right in a way, Paul, that how can we stand up and say that we were refusing to spend a nominal amount of money? But it's not a nominal amount of money. When you consider the amount of money that has been spent across the street and the amount of money that is spent there and then the eighteen or sixteen thousand, whatever, that we're going to spend to get to here. And then we get to here. This is a library.
Sorry, yes.
You know, and then, I mean, I think people need to understand that that, that has to be factored into the savings that we're going to have. I mean, and I don't see that it's going to be a million. I mean, what did Andre say?
Andre thought one point eight to one point nine. But that could still be a savings of seven or eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So, I still say we have.
I don't want to sabotage ourselves, but I'm really very, very disturbed.
Sabotage ourselves.
You know?
I mean, I don't see any way around it, really. I think we've got to spend the money to answer these questions.
I still maintain that I would like, I would like to have a meeting with the selectmen.
Absolutely.
Yes.
We cannot move forward until, until at least the three of us meet again in a work session and hash this out. And, and to me, if we measure to the front of the building and the front of the building is way close to the street, it's a non.
The front of the building could be wherever you want to make the front of the building. You know, and it's, you're not, you know, Skip came up with a plan, okay? That doesn't mean it's going to be, be planned.
I understand that.
Okay, and.
But the sale is that we get more foot, square footage than we get across the street. That's what sells this plan to me. So we have some growth, some room for growth.
Well, there is not going to be any more.
Not now, there isn't.
Not once you're not here, there's going to be.
I, I mean, growth from where we are now.
Oh, yeah, they're going to, they're going to.
I know, it's not going to be any, any more growth here unless we go up to the sky. We can have the library in the cloud. That'll be it. Well, I think, I'd like to make.
I'm sorry. I suppose we can do that. You folks all made the effort to get up and come to the meeting this morning. And we don't normally take input during the middle of a meeting, but is anybody care to say on this? Joan?
Okay, I feel, having been involved in this for many, many years now, we have had so many plans, we've invested money in, expanding this one, putting one in the back. And, you know, because of all the discussion about it and whatever, finally, the committee was established to study all of this. And they took into consideration the site. They took into consideration the wetlands, which Skip did not want to discuss. They took into consideration using this building, which is approximately four hundred thousand dollars, which could be.
That's the value.
The value of it that could be used for a police station. So it was using this facility as it is, you know, with one small addition. And I just feel that the committee did an excellent job of studying all of these possibilities. And that is why the alternative came up with the new building on that site, with the expansion to grow well into the future. If you ever needed a community center, you could include it on that property, connect it in some way with the, you know, with the library. You have incredible amount of possibilities and a nice aesthetic design as opposed to a building here, which aesthetically, I'm sure the architects can do something with it, you know, to make it aesthetically pleasing. But, you know, to a certain extent, but you're going to be right on the road. And I just feel all that work that the committee has done really addressed all the concerns. And, and people were very much in favor of it, as you can see from the support you've gotten in your fundraising. All of that goes away. A lot of, you know, I've heard comments, if they're going to add on to this, I'm not voting for that because then just leave it the way it is. You know, so.
You've heard people say that if you're going to add on to this, then why even do that?
They just assume, leave it the way it is, yes. Yeah, yeah.
Well.
One of the other things to think about is, is at the town meeting where it was declined, okay? We still had sixty-one percent of the people at town meeting vote that they wanted it across the street under the plans and specifications that were designed and worked up with all the studies, et cetera. There's a, there's a chance that, you know, that that goes, a portion of that goes away. We're playing here with a design that a majority wanted. And yet, we got beaten by the fact that, you know, maybe a hundred people at that meeting didn't want it for some reason or other, which is certainly their prerogative. But that was, that was amount of twenty votes would have, would have taken us up to an approval on that building. You've got to be concerned about losing a portion of that if, if you start redesigning here when nobody, nobody was interested in. So I think that's, whether we should go forward in further investigation, that's, I think that's, that's something that you have to discuss with the selectmen. But the, you've got to listen to the voters in this town.
We're referring to.
And I, and I know you are, but that's a reality. And, and we can't separate this from the police. The town has two major problems. One being a, a, a police department that is in violation of numerous codes, that's got to be addressed at some important time. You've got, and you've got the, the fact that you've got a library that's, that's overextended and it's in use and not sufficient. You can't separate that four hundred thousand dollars that was going to be saved for this, this structure in its reuse position. And the minute you take that away, you've got to push that forward. At some point in time, this town has to make a decision on the police department. You just took four hundred thousand dollars away from them.
I, I agree with Paul's observation that if you don't explore the alternative to at least quantify whether or not there is a savings, that you're always going to be suspect when it comes time to vote. And you're kind of damned if you do and damned if you don't. But without answering that question, you have no, nothing to fall back on to say why going across the street is a much better alternative.
Carl?
I, I tend to agree with Paul and Steve on this. Politically speaking, if you don't step to the line and look at, Skip put a lot of time and effort into this. It doesn't matter if I like it or anyone else likes it. If it represents a true savings, you have to look at it. I feel very strongly though, that you should not move ahead with anything without a vote from the people. There just is no way that you can break ground, spend money, that kind of thing. And in answering Mary Ann's question, how close it would be, I thought when I was here with the, or with the selectmen at the fire station, Skip said something about fourteen feet.
Fourteen feet forward.
No, fourteen feet from the road is what you would have left and all parking.
That's the basis.
And my other thought is, in regards to engineering, I think Anthony was pretty clear that there would have to be some engineering done here. And when we looked at it across the road, that's a healthy chunk. I just looked at the report here and that was over fifty-three thousand dollars for engineering. But that's a brand new site. But that just gives an idea of what engineering costs might be. Where the money comes from, I do think it needs to go ahead and have some preliminary drawings. I would hate to see it taken from the library money that has been donated. I think if the town feels they should go ahead with this, it should come out of the town money.
That's interesting. Mary? Seems to me that we're talking about spending about twenty-five thousand dollars for a dose of penicillin. And if it turns out we need it, fine. My guess is it's political insurance.
Yeah.
I feel very strongly, the way Joan and Bob do, that it's important that the town build a building that's going to be good for fifty years, multipurpose. We hear all sorts of talk every time the library question comes up as to how we aren't going to be using books anymore. So turn it into a community center. Turn it into a place where everybody can go and go online or go to the cloud or plug in or do whatever they want to do. But give the town a building that's worth having and reuse this building the way Bob's committee came up with, I think, a very good solution. I think to try to make a sow out of a pig's ear or whatever, however that expression goes, from this building is going to be a mistake. I think there are parking issues that haven't even been thought about yet. I don't think Skip had a clear idea of what a Sally Port was going to be doing over here and what the implications were as far as the amount of space that was available. I think there are things that will be turned up by spending that twenty-five thousand dollars on checking the alternatives that probably would be good for, for everybody to know. And as far as fundraising, as much as you can do, while you can do all this, and if it has to stop, then I suppose it has to stop for a while. But it seems too bad because I think, you know, you're getting on a roll.
Steve? In something short of the contractual arrangement that you described with respect to the scope of work, why not consider? to the scope of work, why not consider some, some scaled renderings and maybe a couple of draft floor plans, just to see if you like what the architects think that the outside might look like and what could be a preliminary idea of the interior floor plan? Something like that shouldn't be more like in the range of five grand as opposed to all the other work that you, obviously, the, the more scope of work you ask for, the more it's going to cost. I might also add, let's just remember that, whether you like Skip or not, he's the guy who suggested going across the street in the first place.
Sure.
Which was an excellent suggestion, nobody really had come up with. And the guy does check out his facts, so there's no question, he's not an architect, he's not trying to devise what the ultimate solution is, but he conceptually can go through things. And for example, the HVAC, he had some people come in and look at that, so it's not quite as abstract as it might sound. I think it's worth it to find out, as he said, whether or not in the total scheme of things, it works or not.
Ruth?
Well, I, I was going to say the same thing Skip did about, I mean, Steve did about Skip having the suggestion first of us going across the road. And I also, we put so much effort into getting every detail covered, every test, and we have a turnkey pri, a cost of what that building over there is going to be. Skip's cost doesn't even begin to encompass all the things that are in that price. That price is going to keep going up, that cost of Skip's building will keep going up and up and up, because you have to have the interior redesigned and worked, and all of that costs funds and money. And I think at some point, we have, in the time we've lived here, we're sort of closing on 20 years, we have done this over and over and over again. There are always going to be people who do, who don't want whatever you decide. And when are you going to put your foot down and say, we're sticking with the plan we had, we researched it every which way that we could, it's the right plan, stick with it, raise the money with people saying, this is the program we're going with, this is contingent upon this building being built, see how much money we get, see if the town is, is relieved by what fundraising has brought in to help with the cost of building a wonderful building the town can have. And stop every time. I mean, you could do this all over again, get a program ready for this building, and have someone else pop up with another plan and say, why don't we try this? When do you stop and get something done?
And just, my thoughts is, I'm sitting here listening to the general public, we get to the end of this plan, we get, we spend this money, and then we say, oh, yeah, we're going to save $800,000. Well, oh, no, we're going to save $400,000. Then we're going to be arguing how much money is worth saving. I, I don't see Skip's plan, I love, I loved the idea when you first came in, but I don't see, I mean, he's saying, we're, we're going to use the existing bathrooms. We can't use the existing bathrooms. I mean, and it's not even sensible.
You're adding bathrooms.
Pardon?
You're adding bathrooms.
Right. And we're adding bathrooms. You know, and you look down, I asked him if we can look down in and see, we've got all these walls here, can they be moved? I don't know. I mean, that's, that's a serious issue. You know, you can't just be saying, oh, yeah, well, we can move walls. And you're going to have to close the library. And the books have to get put away, because when you go through the brick front wall, let me tell you, the dust is going to come. It's going to, the library's going to disappear from your vision when you're inside, when you do that. I've been in a building where they blasted through the walls in a day in school with little children in the building, and it was a disaster. So this, this has to be closed, and the books that all have to get put away are covered somehow.
I'm just saying that Wolf World's thinking they're not going to lose for a couple days. I'm just telling them. What they think, I don't know if it'll work out.
They think.
They need to have it approved.
Two more, and then we're going to be moving on.
Okay. I just want to say, in regard to lessening the cost of what you're giving the architects and getting a rendering, whatever, I, at one point in my life, I was an architectural drafts person. You are not going to get any cost value out of that. You're going to have to go through that they explained to, if you want to get a cost value. Because just renderings and whatever tell you nothing about price, you know, and a floor plan. You have to get into more detail than that.
Okay. Max, and then Stephen, and then we'll move on.
About the plan across the street, it is at this point a few years old, so will, would there be, because I don't know whether, what you're going to go with, but would there be costs to updating that plan that would also you'd have to consider in terms of...
Well, there's, we've already thought about the inflationary factor.
Right. I mean, all the materials, going to be different costs, and...
Well, it's going to be, there's no doubt about it, that it's probably going to be, I would say between $150,000 and $200,000 more than what we thought when we presented a year and a half ago, so that has to be thought about as well. Steve?
I agree with Joan with respect to the value of the, of scaled renderings and the
floor plan. I think the idea was simply, if you don't, if you ask for those and you don't find something that you like, then the conversation can stop at that point. Because Skip's concept really was, from a very much of a layman's standpoint of, how could you possibly do this? Not necessarily that it was going to be architecturally pleasing or space efficient, that, those considerations, so...
I would inquire as to if that is a possibility. Okay, then. So, as I, before we leave the subject for the morning, as I say, I'll ask the selectmen to be either at time on their agenda or set up a separate work session. I would advocate a separate work session, so that they can do their business and not have to be dependent upon time for us.
Yeah. And I'd like to do that within a reasonable amount of time, within a couple of weeks, ask them if they can do that within a couple of weeks.
Do we need a motion?
No, I didn't put them down, I just put these down in discussion, I don't think we moved, we did.
Okay, you can just set that up, we'll just...
Yes.
You can just set it up, okay.
All right. Moving on, then, the only new business was last, last month, we presented with a town harassment policy.
Oh. Can we ask, can we meet with Lloyd at the end and see if we can set up a date, so we can have that?
Okay.
All right. I was trying to remember who was the chairperson. Okay. The rotating chair. Thank you, Lloyd.
Sure. As I was, as I was saying, we, we presented with a copy of the town harassment policy, and we hope you all have a chance to review it. Keeping with our effort to make sure they're all marching to the same drum, or I would entertain adoption, entertain a, a motion to accept that policy, if I were on.
Second.
Aye? Aye, okay. And that's all we have for new business. And the old business, I had the Capitol Campaign Committee, obviously, I think we touched on that this morning, we're into our, we're, we're pretty much at a stop hold until we get some, you know, as far as printing up our materials, because it'd be nice to know what we're going to be printing up, so...
Do you want to have call a meeting?
I think we, we would, we would.
How would you like to handle that?
Before we call a meeting, I'd, I'd like to recommend that we continue with the Capitol Campaign, with the understanding that if the library across the street does not move forward, the people have the right to withdraw their, their pledge immediately. I, I think that we need to keep moving. I, I think, that's what I'm saying, we're, we're looking at maybe a year down the road, well, we might be looking at two years down the road if everyone withdraws their pledges and says, no, we're not going to do this, you know?
I'll mention that to them. And you and I can set up a table and try to... And the only other thing I had for the morning was that a week from Tuesday is the New Hampshire Library Trustees Conference, we're all going. Under the rights and no laws, can we all go in the same car? Or is that, would that be an issue?
Only you can't talk to each other.
Right. No, no, we can talk to each other as long as the discussion, any discussions of the library cannot come up.
Okay, well, I'd be happy to drive. I'd be happy to drive. Okay. So, I'll get in touch and we'll figure out where to go.
No matter, no matter what, we'd all have to ride in separate cars, which would be pretty cool, which...
Yeah, well, that was my point, but then again, in this day and age, I don't want...
I may, I would enjoy not having to drive, but I may have to drive, because I may have to take the dog with me, because if I don't have a dog sit up.
All right, well, I'll call you whatever.
I'll see, yeah.
And that's all I had for the morning. Okay, next meeting is June... The next week, the scheduled meeting.
June 8. We can put it on there.
Okay. All right. And with that, mine, motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Second.
All right. Thank you very much. And folks, thank you very, very much for coming this morning. Really do appreciate it.
Thanks for your comments on this.
Yes.
Ken, thanks for doing public on a guy Friday, Saturday. I think everybody here really appreciates that. Happy Mother's Day.
Yeah. Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers.